Hello, leading or always. Roll call.
It is so nice. Patel.
Here.
Eric.
Here.
Fitzgerald. Irvin.
Here.
Peeler.
Here.
Hughes.
Here. I make a relationship to Hughes. Fitzgerald.
Hughes.
Yes.
Peeler.
Yes.
Fitz- Er, Irvin.
Yes.
Eric. Please stand for prayer. Please make sure yourself will draw and sound.
Let us pray, oh Lord, that we who serve your people in public office may have your blessings and guidance in our deliberations and decisions. So that we honestly hear this evening, but be just and beneficial to the people whom we serve.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Can you approve a minute? Stand up the minister. That comes hot right off the YouTube video, so we should be all correct. He did a good job on that. There. Do you have any light overs? Yes, George.
I move that the minutes here provided to be on Tuesday, November 13th, be approved as presented at this time.
Excuse me. Really?
Yeah. No modification?
A hour and 27 minutes worth like that and watch that event. Who, uh?
George.
Eric.
Yes.
Irvin. Yes. Peeler. Yes. Hughes. Patel. Yes. Patience and communications. Okay, we're gonna do a little different today. We'll go with the, uh, audience participation. Give you five minutes unless we decide to link with it. Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
You got anything?
Uh, only thing I got is we're gonna have the, uh, Christmas dinner down at the center. Fifteen, ten dollars a plate, it'll be one dollar, it'll start at one o'clock. And everybody's welcome. Somebody said bring your own plates, right? No, we'll have them. So everybody's welcome and, uh, I can see you guys over there. Come down if you're good. It's gonna be good food.
Was it fifteenth? How much is a plate? How much is it?
Ten dollars.
Ten bucks a plate?
Yeah. And also, I want to thank Bob for that commercial road. Everybody down South End and in Mingo's Happy. Did a good job. Now, if we could get some curbs on the east side would be nice.
We get a set of new sidewalks and curbs, you get a set of property owners.
That's true. Yeah. Only the repu- uh, if it's possible for their sidewalks. We get the curbs in, up the sidewalks in. Our years is from where the waterworks begins, go all the way down, pass in and right to your house. It starts at the waterworks heading south, no curb.
Thank you, Fred. Anything else?
Okay. That's it. One thing, Bob, I want to say I gave him a big kiss, but I know, you know what I mean? Did a good job.
I'm taking.
But I can make a special bar on that. He does it, he did a nice job, you know? But you still have your people who have something smart to say about the other day. They're not happy when you try to do something. You still have that one person or somebody that's not satisfied.
Negativity, right.
Yes.
Anyhow.
But we appreciate it.
Okay. So, and, uh, I understand, Timmy approached me today, he wants to set up a date for his, uh, men to have the Christmas party down the center.
Yeah, I gotta tell him, I gotta tell him the date. I'm gonna try to set it.
He mentioned it to me, but I won't say anything.
Well, I got it all set up for Santa Claus and everything else.
Okay. All right.
Anybody else, any of you guys want to throw a little party down or give me?
I don't think there's anybody else in the audience, our mayor.
Thank you, Fred. Ms. Seawon.
Yes, hello.
Say your name.
Janine Seawon, 119 West Boulevard, Mingo. Hey, um, I know it was brought up last, and I apologize, I couldn't be here last council, uh, but I got feedback from it and I appreciate you guys listening to what I want to do up at the cemetery. So I brought some pictures, kind of what I want to do. I know I talked to Ernie about it. Take one and pass it. Sorry for the pink paper, it was almost in my printer at the time.
I'll put it in there.
Yeah.
I showed the papers.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. So, let me tell you kind of my reasoning behind this. You know, I want something really nice for my parents. Might get emotional, but anyhow, um, I know that the cemetery has been a lot of work with such little help you guys have here in the city. And I realize the cutbacks and things like that, and they do the best job that they can. But I was trying to think of something that would be appealing and maybe enhance some of the areas up there. And I know with one start, somebody else will start and it just carries on and goes, you know, and it could end up being one of the nicest cemeteries in the valley. But I know it needs a lot more work because people don't even come and even look at their graves. You know, they bury them and they forget about them and sometimes when I got time, I go around, I do extra weeding on some of them. But I want to do this, um, as you can see, it's gonna take a lot of money to do this and it's not gonna be done cheap. It's gonna be pretty much just like that. It's gonna have the decorative edging and it's gonna be the two-layer, actually three, I'm sorry, is it three layers? Yeah, it's three layers and there'll be colored cement on it. And, um, my family, uh, we really want to do this. And I know I talked to Ernie about, um, oh, it's been a few months now when you came over to the office.
Yeah, it's been a while.
Yeah, it's been a while. And he, you know, he kind of said, you know, it's, it's your plots, you do what you want as long as it's nothing junky or anything like that. So I showed him the picture on my phone and he said, okay, you know, it looks good for me, with me, and it's a go. And I said, okay. Well, then we started and then I, uh, Timmy called me and said, hey, what's going on with the grave? And I told him and I said, I talked to Ernie and I thought it was okay. And I came to council back in, I think, February and brought it up. Jack said that he would talk to the, um, park committee, is that what it is, recreation committee?
Park Recreation.
Yeah, Park Recreation. And, and then I, that's when I grabbed Ernie and said, hey, did anything come up? And he said, well, we talked about it, but yeah, as far as you follow the, the, um, what you got there, we're, we're good with that. I said, okay. Then Bobby calls me and says, hey, I think you need to come and talk to council because, um, I don't think they have an idea kind of what's going on. So he said, he showed you guys the pictures, I printed it off for you. That's kind of where I'm at. I really want to do this and now Bobby did tell me that there's an ordinance. I looked at that ordinance. This is not a footplate, this is a monument. So according to, and he'll tell you, am I right or wrong? So according to your, uh, ordinance, a monument has to be no higher than 36 inches. Okay? So it's definitely, as you can see, it's not gonna be 36 inches. It's gonna be probably tops six, seven, something like that. I think the bottom is four, then it's two and two, so it would be eight.
What's your, your headstone's in the back or?
The headstone's in the back, just like it is there. It's a double headstone, except the only thing different about that.
Is it 24 inch? Right?
Um, I'm not real sure what it is. I got, my brothers have all those measurements, I should've brought them. But in the middle there where it's like solid gray, we have a vase. But that's pretty much it. And it's square, it's all one piece, but it does have the, the vase in the middle. So I'm thinking, you know, once somebody starts something, everybody likes it, they do. You know, they will continue. I'm not saying that they would make it like that, but it may be just as nice as that, is what I'm saying. And people may say, hey, who did that? You know, I'd be more than happy to give them all the information, you know, and hopefully we can start something to enhance the whole area and less work for you guys too, in the long run. Um, instead of, you know, um, I know with the weed whacking, it, I know it doesn't get cleaned up, they don't have the time to take a blower and blow off all that. But you know, in the long run, people spend a lot of money on those stones, you know, and, and they're not cheap. And to put them in, they're not cheap. So, you know, every time I go there, I have to, I have to take all the clippings off of it, I wash the stone. It, I mean, it's not, the cemetery's not, hasn't been looking nice in a long time, I'm sorry. Hate to say that. The grass, when they cut the grass, it looks nice. But as far as the weed whacking, all the grass is blown up on top of the stones and people are over there washing them and taking them off, which I get. You don't have the help to run behind there and clean them all off. I get that. Okay? So that's why I'm presenting this to you today. Hopefully you guys will consider it. I'd appreciate it. And like I said, maybe this is something that we can start there and, uh, you know, get it going. Any questions for me while I'm here?
Jean, I would like to say something. I think we do have that cemetery around.
Okay.
I mean, I, I don't, you know, I.
Well, you're, I, I get it. You're a mayor, you gotta say that.
I think our guy did a heck of a job up there. Here's a picture someone took this summer, how nice it looks. Yeah, we don't have to cut it every day, every day.
No, I'm not saying that, Eddie. What I'm saying is.
There are some people who don't take care of their.
Right. Exactly.
Which I understand.
We're hoping to next year paint the whole fence.
Yeah. It's, it's gonna take time. We don't have the help, I get that. We don't have it, I get that.
Does the council have a question for Jean?
Yeah, I got a couple of help. Just one question. You said four inches, two inches, or two inches?
I think that's what it was.
Okay. How much they put up on your, on your footer or your stone?
Uh, that stone, it's gonna be right at the base where that foot is, um, where that, we call that the, um.
That is your footer, the con-.
The footer.
All the concrete's the footer.
Yeah, that's, it's gonna.
That's gonna go down probably 30 inches because there's a lot of weight there.
I was up there, I walked up there to the.
Yeah, it's above, it's above.
Yeah.
So it's not gonna be sitting flat with the ground.
Well, stone itself is just more out of the ground.
Mm-hmm.
Right. Okay. Six inches, maybe eight inches above is out of the ground. So you put this thing in front of it, you're actually above the actual stone itself.
But it's gonna go below that too.
No. No, Jack.
That foundation's gonna go way below.
Right.
And then all this other stuff's gonna sit on top.
Four, two and two. So you're gonna dig down like two or three inches.
Well, you don't, say this is, say this is the footer, this piece right here is the footer, and then the stone's on top of it, that cement is gonna be even with the footer.
What did I actually say here? You're gonna dig down like this far, probably?
Well, no, they got, we gotta dig deeper.
About 24 to 30 inches of footer.
Is it gonna be, is it gonna be even with the bottom of your stone?
This still, it's, it's, looks like this.
Well, it looks like it's above.
Yeah.
Is, is your, is that gonna be even with the bottom of your stone?
No, because there's a footer. Then the stone's on top of it. There's a footer.
Stone's two pieces, Jean. The slab is, slab is one piece and there's two pieces on top of it, which is new.
See, this is like the footer back there, and then the stone. That's even with that, and that's how we're gonna make it.
So you're gonna put this down, it might be eight inches, but you're gonna be digging down these. You say 24 inches.
Oh, yeah, a footer, you gotta go there below the frost line. Yeah. All that, that whole thing's gonna be a footer, we're gonna have a cement truck or two.
Yeah, it'll be below ground.
You're gonna, 24 inches.
It's gonna be below ground. Well, I don't know, I don't know what that is. You're saying they are, I don't know. But.
Because when you do a mausoleum, when you do a mausoleum, Rick, you build a cage underneath all that, then you might build a cage underneath all that.
Yeah, I don't know, um, he just, he just told me that that'll be sticking up probably four inches.
Well, the way you.
The cement, the white one, the white cement.
The way you got it up there right now, I mean, uh, they're gonna still have to do some digging like that.
Oh, yeah, well, we stopped because, um.
Ernie, do you agree with?
I think I did a couple things up here. I did talk to Janine and I think I also told her we're looking up, I needed to research it because there could be old regulations or something. I said to go up to the setting standpoint, I don't have a problem with it. Asset scans right now, I think it's probably, my days coupled, but it's probably in, first with a couple sections, okay? I think it's a monument, it says all markers from one to the place at the head of the grave. That implies when you start coming down below marker, you're not permitted, except for footstones, which are only permitted if they're installed level with existing grounds.
Yeah, but that's not a footstone, but go ahead.
Well.
But the monument part is, yeah.
The monument part is. Uh, it also talks, and, and it's a gray issue when it talks about curbing, because once it starts to set up, obviously, it works like it, works like a curve. But the other part of it is, um, council can give, can grant a variance on the waiver. It's the cemetery committee. Uh, it's section, if anybody has an ordinance, it's 953.08, which basically says variances from above regulations may be created only upon written request to and approval by the cemetery committee of council. So basically, that's where it should go.
Or your, or your director here.
Well, yeah, it said, it does say that he can, he can, he can approve.
Yep.
Something if he feels it's in accord, but that implies it's in accordance with, he feels it's in accordance with the regulations.
Yeah.
So it ultimately comes back to council.
Right.
To the cemetery committee. And I think the best thing to do, since you've already, I think you've provided all the information, I don't think you have to send a new request or anything like that. I would suggest that the cemetery meet, some, park cemetery recreation committee meet and review it and go from there.
Right. Well, I know Jack mentioned a couple things to me about if it gets chipped while you guys are backhoeing something, but I checked it out, there are no open graves around that that would accept the right of way, because we are on the right of way. But it's, it's so wide that I don't, unless someone deliberately runs over it, but I don't have a problem if it's an accident, because accidents do happen. Okay? But like I said, there is no open graves around theirs, because it's all closed in with other people. So on the top, on the bottom, on each side, except the right of way side, which if you're looking at the stone, it's the right-hand side, so.
All right, Janine, now I think Jack gave you a call for meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a problem letting her do it, okay? As chairman of the committee, but I'd like to have all council to say yes, because you let, you can point to me later and say, hey, you guys, you guys let her do it. What you would do, you have to bring it back to council, I mean, if the recreation committee would.
Yeah, maybe bring it back, that's not me.
Well, maybe it came from last week.
Yeah.
Last week wasn't this way. Last week was on you, now it's on the committee now.
I mean, you can recommend it.
I mean, we're, we're.
Counsel would recommend it and then you come up to it.
Well, I, like I said, I thought that the ordinance, there was an issue with the ordinance, okay? That's why I gave it to Ernie.
You know, and that's walk, talk. But at this point, it goes back to council. And it is specific, it says the cemetery committee of council. Now, there's no problem, the cemetery committee meeting as council, with councils whole and making a decision, but ultimately the cemetery committee makes the final decision.
When you want to do this, Jeanine?
Well, it better be spring now.
I just didn't want you to do things.
Right, and I, and I thank you for that.
Yeah, I didn't want you to do something up there and all of a sudden, you know, you gotta rip this all up, okay?
Right, exactly.
That's what I didn't want to have happen.
Right.
That's why I brought it, uh, because I thought with the headstone thing, I, the monument thing, I thought that, you know, you may be violating that, you know, and I, I didn't want that.
Right, and why that'd be wasting money.
Exactly like this, with these little.
Well, no, I'm not putting, the only thing is not gonna be on there are the two, um, things in the center, yeah. I will not, because, because their headstone says it all. Their headstone says it all, so I didn't.
You ain't related, these don't work.
No. No.
Janine, never call for a meeting.
Okay.
And then, as you said, then in the spring you're wanting to get started.
Yeah.
But again, what Bob mentioned, I mean, you said it could get damaged by, you know, when we cut grass or they're moving into, to dig a, uh, plot or something like that and they hit that or something like that. I don't want to think that we should be responsible for that.
No.
I don't know how that works, but to solicit on, how is that gonna work?
Well, I mean, it ultimately comes down to the circumstances, you know? If it's just like something really terrible, yeah, we might be responsible, but in general, no, we would not be responsible.
Yeah.
But.
And we're okay with that, you know, like we said, accidents do happen, I get it, but honestly, they won't even need to, um, like, we'll, we'll maintain it, you know, we'll weed whack around it and.
We'll do, uh, cross the cheese, lock the eye before this is all said and done.
Well, that's why I wanted to bring it up to you guys to, you know, talk about it, I wanted to show you a picture. Any questions, any?
I got two questions.
Yeah.
I think it's a showpiece for our cemetery. And the other thing is, you have all your, are you already set on a place or?
Yeah, where their parents are buried.
Yeah, my parents.
No, 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 are you opening other quotes for that job?
Oh, yeah.
I'm, I'm in that space.
I'll fix you up with it.
Oh, he's doing a business deal.
Go ahead, schedule.
Come on, toe tag, let's go.
But that's.
All right, Jean.
Thanks, all right.
Oh, okay, all right. You want to go more?
More recreation.
Well, you can be there, you can be.
Well, I can be anywhere I want. I mean, I, I know he's off and I'm off.
All right, yeah. Schedule meeting, Derek.
You can go regional planning for me tomorrow and I'll, I'll stick an eagle in my eye.
It's kinda on hold till the springtime, right?
Yeah.
Well, I, it, well, the, the only time we're gonna do it is the springtime now, but I want to know so that we can.
Get working.
Yeah, I gotta get it, yeah.
All right. We'll schedule a meeting, or Jack will schedule a meeting.
Okay.
We'll take it from there. Port of officers, just, uh, last night was a good night. I'd like to congratulate everybody involved, I don't want to mention names and forget somebody, but I think everybody did a good job. You weren't there last night, were you?
I was not, I had to cover for county school board meeting.
Oh, I didn't, he pushed you off, Timmy.
Mark.
He pushed you off.
Warren, Mark or Warren?
Warren, yeah.
We appreciate, I mean.
I tried to push it off on Mark.
We appreciate what you guys do for us, thank you for the coverage.
We, they, they hired somebody once before to DuBrock County, she lasted a day. I came in this morning, they told me they hired somebody again, so if she makes it till Thursday, we're already ahead. Hopefully I'll win back here a little time.
Thank you, but, uh, it was nice and Jeff, I liked, you know, what you did was nice, all the councilmen were there and, uh, the lieutenant straight lit the tree, which was a nice thing.
We're tired of that, man.
And, uh, the trees look nice out there and decorations, so thanks to all. Go ahead, Bob.
Huge crowd, hell, that's this part. Hope it snows every night. Oh, it's snowing out there. Uh, as far as the first, um, the update on the EQ tank and we're just moving forward, like I said, we, I put in for another grant, hopefully that, uh, we can get that, I made it through the first hoop with that grant. And I'm hoping we can get close to a quarter million dollars to help offset the price of the EQ tank and, and what we're going down there with the grid system and all that. We gotta do it, folks, I mean, we don't have a choice. I mean, uh, so I always.
Are you working with the mega with that one?
What's that?
Are you working with the mega to get that?
Yeah, mm-hmm, yeah. It's an art grant. So, I mean, we got money at zero percent interest, folks, and we might as well use it. I know we're gonna go into some depth, but, uh, doing all this, first of all, if we put that grid system in, I think that, uh, it's going to really help our energy costs down there. I think we're gonna cut at least 25% of our energy costs, you know, with variable frequency drives and everything else that we can do with our motors. Our motors are probably operating at 60%, guys. And, you know, they're getting beat up, those impellers are getting beat up every day because we don't have a grid system and all this gunk goes into them. It's amazing that, that that's been let go. I'll be honest with you, I'm just, uh, flabbergasted by what has gone on down there. So we're gonna make it right. And, uh, you know, with the, uh, with the EQ basin, of course, we'll be able to take more runoff, our plant, be more efficient, we'll be able to have bigger capacity, basically, with that plant, so. Anyhow, we're just moving along and we have enough money out there to do this and it's zero percent interest. The other issue, we, we did Commercial Avenue, uh, my biggest, uh, part of the funding, 62% OPWC, denied me to extend that scope, okay? So they would not give me approval, I'm not gonna say they denied, but they would not give me approval to, to extend that scope. I took it upon myself to extend that scope. And I think that, I think everyone here will agree that that needed to be done. I mean, that road would have probably been impassable soon with the first couple of snows and when we plowed it, it would've been, you know, it would've been next to impassable. I think I got a very good case, I'm gonna take, like I said, a half day off of my job to go out there to New Philadelphia, to argue the fact. I actually got the thing, I got that all done under the original estimate. I got everything done for $610,000. The original estimate to do .45 miles was $645,000. I got 1.19 miles done for 610. So if anyone argues with me with that, that's fine. Alls I want is the $279,000 that they was giving me for the original $645,000 job. That's all I'm asking for, I'm not asking for any more money, I just want what they originally gave us. So I know that the county here is gonna back us, there's 23 other folks I gotta convince. And if I don't give it to us, I'll scream bloody murder, because this is what that money is for, you know? Uh, actually, they're gonna, one of the, one of the, um, people down at one of the groups is gonna expand up into our old stadium, is gonna increase the jobs by 10 or 15 jobs It's gonna increase the jobs by 10 or 15 jobs and whatever else. So, I got that paved in front of them. I mean, come on, this is what this, this is what this money was supposed to be used for. Now, they told me that, well, I could wait till next year and reapply. You know, you reapply and you don't get it, and then they have to remobilize and everything. Yeah, that's $20,000, $30,000 right there. So, anyhow, I'm gonna fight that battle. I hope we get it. AMR, that kind of fell through the cracks a little bit this last two weeks, George. We didn't get the information out to the guy, but we're still pursuing that. And I even told George, better solicit, the other George, better solicit some folks to see what it costs to put some of these in. Because I'm like you, I wanna move on this. One way or the other, I wanna move on, okay? We've got folks out there that are playing games. We need to stop the games. And you're never gonna stop them all, but, you know, you can, you can put a dent in it. So, we'll be working on that. The waterline relocation, you know, I wrote a letter to the county, you know, saying that we turn our streetlights off. We're poor, and I don't know where it's gonna go, but I got a feeling we're gonna end up paying for the relocation of that line down there. But that's just the way it goes. I mean, I can't help that. The county engineer is working with us as much as he can, Jim Brannigan. But I think they actually gave it to their solicitor to make a judgment on it. And I'm just waiting for the judgment to come down. I think it was a very good letter, but I don't think I had enough tears on it, so... But we'll keep working with that. Delinquent bills, this is ongoing. If you guys are getting phone calls, don't accept your phone calls. Just tell them to call us down here, because, you know, some of these people are crying, and they're coming to some of the individual council people, and, you know, and individual council people are trying to say, well, we need to do this and do that. I'm gonna do what I need to do, okay, to get this straightened around. I had a meeting down here, I think it was last Tuesday, with the service department and my water department. And we're gonna, we're gonna really move to shut some of these folks off and get this taken care of. Now, I'm gonna try to make some deals with some people that I know that I would never get any money for, if I can just get something out of them. But as of January 1st, I think all the deals are gonna be done. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna budge. Either you pay your water bill or you get your water shut off. You know, it's pretty bad, you know, I do have a heart. Some people say I don't, but, you know, when you hear a single mother with three kids, you know, and she's struggling to get even help to pay her water bill, you know, it gets kind of tough. You know, you've got kids in that house. It's just, it gets kind of tough. But I do have a heart, and I'm trying to, I'm trying to work with everybody that I can. I get slapped in the face quite a bit, too, because I've made some deals with people, and they just turned their back on me and stuck it to me again. So, we'll see, we'll keep working on that, but I told you, my goal was to get down to, one day, that if, you know, your water is not paid that month, you're getting your water shut, you're getting your 10-day notice right after the bills due. I don't want four pages of bills, seven pages of bills, 10 pages of bills. I don't want them. I'm also going after the unoccupied houses, because, you know, I'm just, like I said, I feel like I'm in quicksand with some folks at times. I gotta get those taken off, because that's gonna make a heck of a difference, too. We can send the bills out to houses that are not occupied. And I think I'm gonna have a meeting with the water committee. I personally do not believe we should be charging folks if their, if their water has been shut off or, like, if it's an abandoned house, okay, and they're renting that home and their water is shut off, I don't think that it's fair to be charging them $55 to have that meter in their home, in their house. We're not providing them a service.
If the water's shut off, they're still charged?
Yeah, that was kind of the direction that I was given, and I don't believe in that, because we're not providing them a service.
So, the water's not being run?
Exactly. There's no water usage, folks. There's none, okay? Now, somebody said, well, well, we need $30 to pay for the plant. They're not, we're not providing them a service. I can't, I can't buy that, okay? I don't care if there are meters in their house or not. We're not providing them a service. Nothing's going through that faucet, okay? We're not giving them anything.
Are you charging on the water bills or are you charged for the meter itself?
No, there's no charge really for the meter itself.
We do, you know, fire company.
No, there's no charge for the meter itself, no. You just got your minimums, you got the $30, and what water you use, $11.50 or whatever else, or if you're down, you know, Commercial Avenue, it's more, so... Yeah, I've taken that upon myself really not to charge that, because I just don't think that's fair. But I thought that we had the kind of direction here that we wanted to do that, but I don't, I don't think that's fair. And we'll talk about it, George, in a meeting, because we're gonna have to have a meeting here real soon, I think, just to talk about the Zander and all that stuff and try to get this stuff straightened out, how we wanna go. So, whenever you want to set up a meeting, let me know. We had one of our folks actually pass, Bob Westfall, passed, he got his Class 1 water.
Is that Ardenson?
Yeah, it's Ardenson. So, now we can have a guy actually in the water department down there. He can, you know, he can actually be working inside if we need to be... I'm trying to move folks around. I'm trying to get the best workforce for this village, okay? In the past, I think we have not looked at that. You know, you step over a dollar to save a dime, okay? You've gotta get quality people to work for you. That's all I'm gonna say. You've gotta get quality people to work for you. I am blessed to have a George daughter and a Timmy and even my dirty Santa down there, Kyle, you know, to be working for us, because they do a very good job. So, you know, some people may have axes to grind with some of these folks, but that's, I don't care. They're good people, and, you know, you have to have good people. If you don't get good people, you're not gonna survive. They actually did a waterline break on Saturday. I authorized the overtime. It was a 6-inch line up on Sunrise. They had it done in four hours, so that was good. I have nothing else.
Thank you, Bob.
You're welcome.
You're all, we're here. We're doing a nice job.
Thank you.
You are here for us.
Well, hey, we gotta do that.
I got a question for Bob.
Yes.
He's answering. I'm asking you first, though. You're ahead of the buck. This water line, we can't do it in-house?
No, we can't. I, well, I talked to Brannigan, and one of the things is, it's, it's, you know, first of all, it's gonna be put underneath the tree.
Correct.
Yeah, and I talked to him about it, and I respect his opinion. I said, do you, how about in some meantime services now? He goes, Bob, if you get down there and you don't do it right, you're gonna have people that are gonna not have water for probably two or three days, and we don't want that to happen. And I said, I understand that. So, he kind of convinced me that the best way to go is to let somebody else take that burden on.
How far are we talking?
Not very far. I mean, it's just, we're that, 30 or 40 feet. If you wanna, if you wanna...
Look at 22K, though, I mean...
Yeah, if you wanna, I mean, we could try. I, you know, I just, like I said, I respect his opinion. That's why I'm...
I understand, because the other guy's sitting down with a bunch of women down there, too, Scotty, you know?
Yeah. I will talk to him again. I'll talk to him again about it, but, like I said before, I'd rather... Not have any major issues when, you know...
Is Mr. Westfall a part-time worker?
Yes, he is.
He's part-time, he's got Class 1 license, right?
Yeah.
Pretty good. He can full-time go to the testing. I do have a question for maybe the mayor, whoever. This Mingo deposit page, I'm not, I don't get on it. I don't want to know about it. With my wife on it, and they're bitching about the roads, they're bitching about the water being turned off. Is Mingo deposit page part of Mingo Junction or is this a private individual?
I can't answer.
The deposit page is, I'm pretty sure, private. It's not village authorized, I think.
No, it's not village authorized, for sure.
It's not a village thing.
It's just a Facebook. We're taking a beating on this thing.
Some people put things on there. It's not positive. We should suppose it being a private thing, right?
We got people answering questions on it, damn thing.
Right.
Why ain't this all cruised out? Well, you know what? Call the guy that's in charge of it. Couldn't answer questions for the guy that's in charge. Same with, you know, with the water mines, with the water bills. We got people answering questions, asking questions, why my water being shut off? And we got people answering questions. That's the guys that was answering questions, not people up here. Sorry, that's why I feel wrong.
No, I agree with you, and I broke, I broke the golden rule, because somebody got on there and said something about, they liked, they liked the commercial, but how about Battle Run? And I answered to that, and I tell you, I broke the golden rule. I actually came back on there and said, hey, that's enough. I don't wanna hear no more about it, you know, because then the people started chirping, Jags, I think it was your dad, and what's his name got into it? And I'm like, that's not what this is for. That's not, this should never have happened, and I should have never answered it. I blame myself, because Battle Run, like Jags' dad come, you know, a lot of that road is not even our road, okay? And there's only a few houses on it. I hate to look at it that way, but you have to look at it that way at times, because, you know, if I got a road that's got 50 houses on it, or it's got three houses on it, duh, you know? You're gonna try to take care of that road. And I told him, you know, we've talked to the county and everything about that road. It's starting to slip. That's gonna be major, major money down there. Probably not even, you know, for us.
Thank you. Jack, I agree with you. Bobby, I agree with you. That is not a thing for to ask. People need to know something, they should call the people in charge, or they can get the answer from them. So, let's move on with that. Thanks, Jerry.
Thank you, Mayor.
And I will say one more thing. We really need to look at people dumping garbage down there. We might wanna think about trying to do something.
We tried that, and it's a hard thing to do.
I know.
People are smart enough where they're taking their names off.
I know, it's a big thing.
We went down there numerous times. I went down there.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Uh, Waters, if George isn't here, you have anything for him, Bobby or Kyle?
No, like I said, they're, you know, they're coming up against their budget, but we had a lot of overtime with them folks, because, you know, the mill's demanding more, and actually, George is working afternoon to try to cut down on the overtime. We're probably gonna have to put, put these probably one more person in there when the mill early gets kicked in here, so... And that's a good thing.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Hyde, did you have anything?
I have a couple of things. George had asked last meeting about the part-time employees, and I have a printout here of how many are in each department, sewer department, water, fire, service department, administrative offices, part-time nurses, part-time seniors, senior directors, so... I'll make copies here. He also asked about a checkbook. I talked with Kim. We are done on our side. We have moved it on to, I forget what the guy's name is.
RZA?
First name. She's sent it on our computer guy, whoever that is.
My dog, is it?
Oh, the dog. I don't know.
I bet it's a dog.
So, yeah, so it's now it's in his hands, so we're done on our end. Everything's been, you know, line by line, whatever they want on it. So, once he gets it done, then it should be up and running, I think. So, hopefully, very soon.
All right, thank you.
That's all.
Ernie, how are we on payroll?
We've had 24, 26 pays so far. We've used 93%. We've a lot of monies. Police department's got 1% left in wages. Fire department has 10% left in wages. EMS part-time wages are $16,300 in the red with two bi-weekly and one quarterly payroll left in mind. Water wages have 12% left, and the sewer is 8%. I mean, with your overtime and stuff, it's...
I know. We're actually doing pretty good, you know?
That's where we're at.
Have you got questions for Jimmy?
Can we have a printout of that, too?
Who's Jimmy?
Jimmy Jags.
Yeah, you know what? Once I get, yeah, I'm done on mine, so I'll go big printout. Ernie, you have anything?
Yeah, I'd just like about a two or three-minute executive session at the end of the meeting to discuss pending litigation.
Rudolph's on today.
Well, we can do, but I'm gonna do a couple minutes.
All right, all right. Chief Segans not here, I see. Chief Wright's not here. Kyle, Kyle, not here for IP. Finance committee report. We just had it. Jags has had some stuff. We should order, maybe have a finance meeting for long, before the end of the year?
Sounds like we're in trouble in a couple areas, so, yeah.
We'll get on him about getting a finance meeting.
Be screaming?
Coming up.
I'll be screaming.
The well, the well's dry.
I'll be screaming. You guys make it, we'll all be screaming.
Okay, let's move on. Adam, anything in ordinances?
Nothing was provided at this time, so nothing claimed there.
Okay, Mr. Haraker, Jack, anything on safety?
No, I got nothing.
We, I think we all got copies of if this is under safety with the people take care of their houses and everything. It looked like the report that came out was pretty good. Did you get one down?
Yeah, I got one. It's over on my desk.
It's in a mailbox, or...
I guess it was your last meeting, but we didn't...
There's only been a couple that owners have found.
Yeah, there's some of them they couldn't find, but I thought overall...
Yes.
You know, they, it was about 50-some.
It looked good, yeah.
Yeah, it looked good. That's all I had there.
All right, thank you. Anything on roads or transportation, Jack?
No, Mayor.
Adam, anything on street lights, curbs, or sidewalks?
No report, Mayor.
Right. George, anything on water and sewer?
I had something about these streetlights. There is one out, pulling up the beginning of Logan. I'm gonna get that phone number tonight, because I come off the exit, I saw a bit of rain, there was a lot of traffic, so I didn't... Get out the car, but I'll get that tonight, put that in, and that should be fixed within a day or so. I think I'll pick that shit one up again.
Oh, there it is. I have it drawn up to Logan.
Coming off the, coming off the exit there.
Yeah, straight ahead. Yeah.
Oh, you got your, Jimmy. I'd like to schedule a finance meeting sometime in December. Have you figured out the next one?
Okay.
George, anything on the water and sewer?
Just one little tiny thing. This was mentioned last meeting, you know, on the 4th meeting with Omega presenting the Chicago Partnership, hopefully getting authorization by them to offer as a subcommittee. And then we can get things rolling with that and start doing some agreements and things, some joint purchasing and some things like that. But of course, we'll see how things develop and how quickly, if, again, it looks like, I don't imagine a difficulty in them approving us as a subcommittee. But I'll get you guys posted as far as how those things go after that meeting.
Thanks, George. What is that, George?
The 4th.
We've just been trying to get you that, that plan you gave, too.
Yeah, I got a gift.
Okay, all right.
Oh, just for recognizing, George did give me the copy of the asset management plan now, so I could go through and peruse.
Yeah, have a good time.
Yes, I will. Actually, I've done the issues.
Jack, anything on recreation?
No, I'll schedule a meeting for Mrs. Seig. I'll schedule one here, so...
All right. Adam or Jeff, anything on health and pension?
Jody Lynn had presented information last meeting in regards to the suggestions that Frank Harmon had, the option that he provided, his three different suggestions. I think the third option was his, one that he suggested that would be most beneficial for us to go along with. No real changes. And she's had meetings with a couple of the, several of the employees. I know Kyle, for one, had went through it, you know, and there's not really any differences. But one question last meeting was brought up about the co-pays as they relate to, you know, generic versus brand, you know, and she did send a text out, you know, that addressed that, but I still think that Mr. Harmon's third option, the suggestion, was the one that I think is still in line for us to go with. The way she made it sound, I don't know if we have to get an answer back to him pretty quickly. I know last time, I don't know if any of you guys can recall, but I think we're under a time crunch as far as getting an answer back to him, what we, what our intentions are, if we wanna say, hey, go ahead, or, you know, pump the brakes or what. But I think we're safe to say, you know, it's been, you know, well-communicated to employees, so we can't, you know, they can't come back on us in that regard, you know, as they did in previous years. But it's been communicated, and the questions have been answered, and I think we're safe to tell Mr. Harmon to go ahead, you know, with that third option, but unless anyone else has any concerns or hesitations at this point. What do we have to do, in the form of a motion?
I think just make the motion.
Just to, uh...
I'd say just make the motion. Yeah, I would word it to review the hospitalization coverage in accordance with the terms provided.
Okay.
Get that, Jags.
All right, but I got the, feel to make a motion to renew the hospitalization coverage with the terms provided.
Provided by?
By Frank Harmon.
And Harmon.
I'll say, who is Frank Harmon with?
Ohio Insurance, or I don't know the...
Public Employees Council.
Yeah, I'll get it for you.
It's like OPEC, something like that.
Let's not remember it.
I thought you played for the Washington Senators. Sorry. Frank Howard, all my trying, I'm sorry. I don't know, Jack. Sorry, I wasn't in there when I had it. I might get one. I'm glad you did. Yeah, I look like some...
It'll go up, right? Yes, go to 329,000, all right, $502.
309 this year, yeah.
Ohio Insurance Services.
What was it, 6% one up?
Yeah. Yeah.
The page, very often, it goes from 40 to 45, especially given the need tonight.
On your thing about generic, you know, I did some checking. If the doctor says that he has to have brand, we're, you know, we're gonna get it.
Right, if the doctor says there, you know, you can. But they usually, there's like, I think they said there's standard protocols to try three separate generics first before you do that, but a lot of these people tell their doctor, and the doctor just, hey, I'll get you what you want, but... Yeah, that's something, that's gonna be a concern, that's for sure. But I don't know.
You have a vote on it?
George seconded it.
George seconded, yeah. Shoots.
Yes.
Felix.
Yes.
Earl.
Yes.
Eric.
Yes.
Bill, Mayor. Thank you, Jeff. Jeffrey, anything on senior citizens?
On the Christmas party, Fred?
Right, the 15th of December?
December. 4 o'clock.
1:00. $10 a plate. And you're welcome, Mr. Shobbi, you're welcome. Bring that big gift.
Hit your head.
Better get bigger blocks.
She's a big team, doesn't care, sorry, I think.
Yes.
Well, she'll give you certificate for a bird.
All right. That's... Do you have any BJJ report?
No.
No, I just, I don't know.
Annexation.
No report, Mayor. I can have them all of it, George.
We all got an email from the Port Authority Director in reference to annual dinner type little thing. I'm gonna try to make it. I don't know if we can make it or not, but a lot of the guys from JW Steel's gonna be there as far as the main speaker, and I guess everyone else, you know, a little bit of showing us why even all of us individually, I suppose. But employee ID emails in your inbox, check if you're interested in. But it's during the day, from the morning hours, like a breakfast thing, so kind of, if you have things scheduled, it might throw off your schedule, but...
I was going, but I gotta go to New Philadelphia that day.
Oh, it's the same day?
Yeah, it's the same day. I was going to that, you know, that's what it sets me, because I, you know, I wanted to go to that, really.
Are you back?
Huh?
George.
Eight, seven to the start.
This is 10.
It's the Port Authority Annual Meeting. I forget the exact date. December 12th at 8:00 a.m.
I don't know, I didn't...
It would be nice, like a...
I don't, it was, December 12th, December 12th at 8:00 a.m., I believe it's it, probably.
Yeah, there's a, yeah, a page, it's two, it's a little...
Yeah, it's at 8:00. Seventeen dollars. Seventeen dollars. And I'll take it up till I get filled up, so if you really wanna go, you might wanna call them.
What does that date on it, Southwest?
What's that, Port Authority?
Yes. That's number 12.
Or 12, I don't know when, I don't know.
12th of December.
I think it's a Wednesday. It's a Wednesday.
Yeah. If there's a field of planning on going, maybe we should... If you said communicate with them, I don't want to show up and then it's being packed house and it's like...
Well, I think we have to go over makers of...
Yeah, you do.
Right. Maybe as a group, I'll see if they have anything, something, any left. VIP treatment.
Cash money or something like that.
Different bills.
I think we're the progress one. We can get a number who...
I got a credit card.
We'll look at that.
Thanks. Able organization committee, Adam, Jack, or Sat, you have anything on it?
Nope.
Okay, revitalization committee. Any unfinished business?
I'm gonna make an announcement about the Christmas program. They're gonna have that at 5:00 p.m. at the middle school, you know, Jim Fryland's Christmas, Christmas party.